Welcome. We will begin our town council meeting number zero four.
Dash two, four. Town council chambers in downtown Freeport, and it is Tuesday, February 27th, a few minutes after six. Let's find out who's here. Councilor Fornier?
Here.
Councilor Lawrence?
Here.
Councilor Brnoy?
Here.
Councilor Pilch?
Here.
The Chair, John Egan, is here. Councilor Smith is excused this evening, had to go out of town. And Councilor Matt Pillsbury will be here a little bit later with a delay from work. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, all, those watching and those here at Town Hall. Great to have a crowd. We have a fair number of things on our agenda this evening, but not any of them are expected to be terribly long. We'll have two chances for public comment. At the beginning of the meeting here, after just a few housekeeping items, we'll have public comment for those in the room, and then the online public comment will come after our action agenda a little bit later in the evening. And we just want to remind you, public comment is for you to share any thoughts or ideas that you have. When you come to the podium, please state your name, where you live, and to be respectful to everybody else, we ask for three minutes' time on your presentation. So, we will get going. First, second order of business is to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number zero three dash two, four, held on February 6th, and to accept the minutes as expertly printed.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions about the minutes? All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous, five, zero. Thank you, Chris. Our next item is announcements, and I have a few here, and then other councilors can chime in with theirs. After more than a year of data analysis and community engagement, the FSAB, Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board, is collecting input to refine a draft of the town's first climate action plan. Printed materials for this can be found at Town Hall and at the library. You can also view the draft plan online at freeportmain.com/freport-sustainability-advisory-board/news, blah, blah, blah. It's really not worth reading over the microphone because it's too long of an address, but it's printed here on paper, and you can also get it on the agenda. The plan strives to tell the story of why taking action on climate change matters for Freeport and recommend high-impact actions that the municipality can take in the next few years to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and help prepare our community for a safe, healthy, and resilient future. There are in-person and online ways to give input. So, the FSAB Board is collecting data and input for the climate action plan. The 2023 Annual Town Report is now available for viewing on the town's website. Printed copies will be arriving in the next few weeks. If you haven't noticed, the orange signs are back. Town roads were posted starting February 20th for heavy loads. This is done to protect the road infrastructure as temperatures rise and frost begins to work its way out of the ground. Given the relatively mild temperatures this winter season, we're not seeing as much frost, which leads the staff to think that the roads will only be posted for a limited amount of time. Tax season is here, and the library can help. Several tax forms are available at the front desk, and staff are happy to help you locate additional forms, instructions, as well as some tax help. Please stop by or visit Freeport Library. Please participate in the community library's building use survey. Library staff are eagerly looking for feedback to help them better understand how the community utilizes the library building itself and what they might consider when planning for future renovations. Your input as a resident is invaluable in improving our services, and we thank you for taking the time to participate in our survey. You can get started at the library's webpage, or if you prefer to fill out a printed survey, copies are available at the library lobby. And also absentee ballots are available for next Tuesday's, March 5th, presidential primary. Please contact the Clerk's Office for details about how to get one. Any other announcements to share this evening? Okay. We will move on to information exchange. This is a chance for councilors to talk about committees, inputs from residents, feedback from public events, things going on in our community. Any items for information exchange? Absolutely nothing happened in the last two weeks. Next up is our Town Manager's Report. Sophie.
Good evening. The first thing I'd like to say is, yes, we have an election. It's starting to get a little busy at Town Hall. Next Tuesday, if you'd like to stop and say hi to me at the polls, I'll be there from seven to nine-thirty greeting people in the morning, so it will be fun to see folks. I'm excited to report that both individuals that we offered the deputy chief positions to have accepted, so we're putting them through the pre-employment process. We're hoping to have one start in April and the other start in July. Very excited. I can't wait to share names and resumes with you because it's quite impressive. We have the Bureau of Labor Standards here today. They'll be here tomorrow and Thursday, going through all town buildings, facilities, training records to see where we can improve. I'm very pleased that we invited them in, so they're coming with a pencil and recommendations as opposed to, I think John Egan said, a hatchet and an invoice, which will be really good.
Small comment.
Small comment.
No reflection on state employees doing their work.
Yes. I have been very busy working with Jessica over the last week on the budget. You'll see the first very small presentation of the capital plan. We will have more information when we present that for public hearing on the 19th, second, the second of April, I think, is when it's scheduled. And now, department heads and I are turning our attention to the operating budget. Been starting to get around to visit committees. We have a lot of them, and I've been enjoying the opportunity to meet with committee representatives to talk about council charges and how to maybe more effectively engage, how the town can more effectively engage with what they're doing. And earlier today, I met with FEDC, and we had a good meeting. Brett continues to work with me on a number of projects that we are looking forward to bringing back to council. It's kind of a boring report, but...
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Nope. All right. Our next item is the public comment period. This is for items not on our agenda. We have three public hearings coming up later in the agenda, so if you hear for any of those, there'll be a chance for coming to the podium and letting your concerns be heard. This portion of the meeting is for anyone to come and approach the podium and share their thoughts with the council. It is an opportunity for you to speak. We're generally not going to get into a back-and-forth in this segment, mainly because of time and respecting those others who may have something to share. So if you'd like to, please come to the podium and just tell us who you are, where you live, and what's on your mind.
My name is Bill Rixon. I live on Barney Road, about a mile south of here. And I've, this past fall, I've been here to speak to you a couple times about my involvement with a group called Third Act Maine. It's a group of elders who are working for a better climate future. And we have been encouraging LL Bean to encourage Citibank to stop funding new fossil-fuel Citibank services LL Bean's credit card, the Bean bucks. And Citibank happens to be the number-one financer of new coal infrastructure, which is pretty horrendous. I think we all know that coal is something that needs to be transitioned from as soon as possible. Citibank is also number two in of the banks in funding new fossil-fuel infrastructure overall. Number one is Chase Bank, who has a branch bank down in Yarmouth, as you probably know, opened back in November. And we of Third Act Maine have been encouraging Citibank to stop their practice of being the number-one financer of new fossil-fuel infrastructure. This is not established infrastructure. This is new infrastructure, and I think most people are aware that we need to be transforming from fossil fuels as rapidly as possible. With that in mind, the state legislature up in Augusta, a few weeks ago, passed a resolution in favor of the fossil-fuel nonproliferation agreement. And I'd like to read quickly the comments of Stacey Brenner, Senator Stacey Brenner from Scarborough, who introduced this measure to, before the Senate. It had passed a few days before that in the House. And Third Act Maine, we had, had, we submitted this resolution to Senator Brenner. But anyway, these are her words. "We find ourselves in a pivotal moment in history, where the choices we make today will determine the future of our environment and the quality of life for all living beings. The fossil-fuel nonproliferation agreement represents a groundbreaking initiative aimed at addressing the urgent need to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels. Fossil fuels have undeniably powered our progress and our economic growth, but the environmental costs have been staggering. Climate change, the degradation of ecosystems, and extreme weather events like the last three historic storms that resulted in devastating flooding events in Maine are all consequences of our reliance on these finite resources. The fossil-fuel nonproliferation agreement recognizes the severity of this challenge and seeks to forge a path forward towards a sustainable and cleaner energy future. It is a commitment to the health of the planet and the health of its inhabitants."
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate sharing that.
Thank you. And you will have a chance to, I hope that you can also add your voices to this. The Sustainability Committee is studying this, is going to report out to you soon, and hopefully you can add our voices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I live on South Freeport Road in South Freeport. And Mr. Rixon and I were on the council for a year, and we didn't agree then, and I don't think we agree now. You know, I think people that look at climate change and have looked at climate change, and I've followed all the current Freeport conversations, as well as the national, international conversations, I think that the only thing left to do is, I believe in God and Jesus, and the people in this that believe in climate change have, that's their deity, because there is no fact behind what they're trying to push. So, please consider that there is a whole bunch of other people that have an opinion that's different. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
My name is Daniel Freund, and I live at 38 Cheehawke Road. I have twice before addressed the council on this issue, and I've called the manager and tried to speak with her in my remaining two minutes and 40 seconds. I will read to you from the general conclusions of a report that was created by the town of Cape Elizabeth 14, 14 years ago. I find that their conclusions are the same circumstance that we have today. By moving school and municipal employees from MEA and MMA plans to virtually identical health plans offered by insurance companies offers a high likelihood that significant savings can be realized for the town and its employees. The current employees are familiar with existing offerings, therefore educating employees relative to any changes paramount. However, since virtually identical plans can be obtained, the only change may be the insurance company. Obtaining identical benefits at a lower cost to the employee provides the town and schools with a greater ability to attract and retain quality employees, as well as improve the quality of services. Maine Education Association Benefits Trust has stated publicly that it cannot or will not provide claims data to school districts. This has the potential effect of preventing school districts from obtaining the lowest-cost competitive bids. In addition, this creates a potential barrier to the entire competitive bid process. In addition, in the committee's opinion, this helps Maine Education Association Benefits Trust maintain a virtual monopolistic control over health plans that can be offered by schools to teachers. In the past, I have proposed, and I reiterate this proposal, that this is my field. I have four decades of experience, and I would very much like to work with the town of Freeport. I have other towns that are interested and that are in discussions with me. I've spoken with Senator King's office. They're extremely interested in this. I've spoken with the U.S. Department of Labor. The Maine Superintendent of Insurance told me it's an ERISA issue. It's federal. The Maine Attorney General's Office has told me this is an ERISA issue. It is federal, and the federal people are very interested. I have one specific request, and it is the nature of my problem. I cannot proceed because I, as a taxpayer, have no standing. I must find an individual, and they're all afraid because they're all afraid, oh, I can't say anything, okay? Or I must find an organization like the council. And I believe that we can cooperate on a simple email, which asks questions like, why has there never been any question asked about the eligibility of a dependent at the trust level? They have no system for it, and they openly admit they make no attempt to keep ineligible people off the plan. There are a few other questions. In the end...
Very quickly, Mr. Freund, your three minutes are expired.
I hope someone, anyone from the council will reach out to me or the manager so that we can continue this conversation. I've been pursuing this for two and a half years. Cape Elizabeth's been pursuing it for 14. You're paying 25% more for your health insurance than you should. Thank you.
Anyone else want to step up to the podium for a public comment? All right. We will move on. Our next item is the first action item on our agenda, to consider action relative to adopting the 20, sorry, February 27th, 2024 consent agenda. We have the consent agenda in front of us. Contributions to the library and a couple of license renewals. Any reason to take an item off the consent agenda? Not seeing any. Councilor Fornier, could you please read the be it ordered?
Certainly. Be it ordered that the February 27th, 2024 consent agenda be adopted?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero, Chris. Thank you. All right. So, this is our first of three public hearings this evening. This is a public hearing on a special amusement permit for Linda Bean's Maine Kitchen and Topside Tavern at 88 Main Street. We will have the public hearing and then have the decision on the renewal by the council. Does anyone wish to comment on the special amusement permit for Linda Bean's Maine Kitchen and Topside Tavern? This is a public hearing. You're welcome to address. Please step up to the microphone, tell us who you are and what's on your mind. All right. I don't see any public participation. I don't see any hands up on Zoom. We will close the public hearing. Councilor Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that a new special amusement permit for the following be accepted. Linda Bean's Maine Kitchen and Topside Tavern at 88 Main Street.
Moved and seconded. Any questions for staff? Daryl?
Not for staff, and maybe Sophie can add to our long list of items she's addressing. So my question is, I guess it's required by our ordinances that these permits have to come forward to the council.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping, as we look down the road, we've had discussion in the past, that maybe we could streamline these licensing that require the annual, that would not have to come before the council unless it's a violation. Certainly, we need a option if there's a violation or if they're not complying with local ordinances, that we could act. But I'd like to see maybe a way to streamline the process that would, number one, you know, take some time savings at council meetings to move on to other items and maybe make it a little bit easier. Thank you.
I'll accept that challenge. See what we can do.
I have a quick question.
Is this in perpetuity, or is there a...
It's an annual thing.
Okay.
And it's on multiple businesses, as you'll soon see.
Yes.
The general threshold, and I'm far from an expert on reading the ordinance here, but the general threshold is live using entertainment in an establishment that serves alcohol is the threshold to require special amusement permit. I believe I got that right. So I have that right?
You did.
Finally, after several years, got that right. All right. Any other comments about this particular item? We didn't have any comments from the public for the public hearing. We're ready to vote. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Five to zero, Chris. Permit is approved. Our next item is item number five, four, dash, two, four, to consider action relative to amendments to Chapter Two, the Administrative Code, five, ten, dash, one through section five, ten, dash, four, to designate the Public Works Director as the head of Public Works Department, and to allow the Town Manager discretion as to whether to designate the Public Works Director as the overseer of the town's solid waste recycling facility. This is a public hearing. Because we're changing some elements of our administrative code, anyone wish to participate in the public hearing? Please step up to the microphone.
I have a basic question. So typically, in organizations, when you change organization structure, responsibilities, and so on, you have motivation for doing that. One of the motivations that I'm most concerned about is, how will this impact budgets and our tax basis, and will it cost us more, or will it cost us less? That would be a nice thing. So, that's really my point, is I, as a resident of the town, I'd like to know what the impacts are from a financial standpoint that we will see. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Peter. Let's see if there's any other public comments, and then we can give the manager a chance to respond to that. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? I don't see any hands. Great. Sophie, you have a response to that last question.
I do. It's a good question. We were having a situation where the organizational structure on paper and job descriptions on paper stayed the same to meet this code, when in reality, the Public Works Director was functioning as a department head with his own budgetary authorities and doing the work day-to-day. So that's why, in this section, we simply are lining out the Town Engineer slash Public Works Director. We have functionally had a Public Works Director and an engineer separately for a long time. The other element in this is giving the Town Manager the discretion to decide what department head is going to oversee the transportation and recycling facility. And the reason for that is, right now, it's with the engineer. That's how it kind of reports up through. I wouldn't see any change with that. I'm not aware of any problems with that. But the strikeout, giving me the designation, allows for flexibility. Otherwise, if I was going to put it under the engineer, I would have had to rewrite another section of the code. I'm hoping that council will let me attack the administrative code anyway, but there's no increase in pay for the Public Works Director. He's already being compensated for the work he's doing.
And the Town Engineer will continue to...
He'll continue, it's, he'll continue to do what he has been doing.
But a few weeks ago, he requested additional resources to help with submissions or RFPs, and so I'm just wondering if that was part of this conversation or not.
I did not get, I did not get a request for additional resources.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Councilor Brnoy, could you please read the be it ordained?
Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter Two, Administrative Code, Section five, ten, point one through Section five, ten, point four, to designate the Public Works Director as the head as the, as, the head as the, of Public Works...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I'm reading blindly. And to follow, and to allow the Town Manager discretion as to whether to designate the Public Works Director as the overseer of the town's solid waste recycling facility be approved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Questions? I'm ready to vote. All those in favor of the action?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. All right. Our next item is number five, five, dash, two, four. This is our third public hearing of this evening, to consider action relative to a new liquor license for the Kendall Tavern, and we will open the public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address the council on the new liquor license for the Kendall Tavern?
Justice Williams, 1050, Freeport. I had a question about the liquor license for Kendall Tavern. Kendall Tavern is in a bed and breakfast, is that true? So, is it, can all bed and breakfasts apply for a liquor license, sort of just randomly? Yes? I mean, okay, so in there, in, for, for meals, for, they can open a bar in their bed and breakfast, they can? Are there any rules and guidelines? I just wondered because, you know, we have many bed and breakfasts, and I don't think they all serve liquor, so, question.
Thank you. I think that's a quick answer from the clerk.
Actually, several of our bed and breakfasts do carry liquor licenses. It's pretty common. A lot of them just wine and stuff like that, but it does happen.
Depending upon the license that they carry, there would be different rules, and the state would be enforcing them.
Okay.
Typically, they're just leaving wine out for their guests. They're not inviting a lot of the public into...
But they could. I mean, you don't wish to...
No, but, yeah, it could, but having been a bed and breakfast owner, I wouldn't want to do that. I have to be there all the time, not just 100% of the time.
All right. I don't see any other interested parties, so we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from the council on this license? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is five, six, dash, two, four. We didn't, oh, we didn't read it. That was you.
That was me, yes.
Why didn't you read that?
I wouldn't take it personally.
Sorry. Before we can move on, scratch that vote. We have to take it again because we actually haven't read the item for the action. My mistake. Dan, could you please read the be it...
I'd be happy to, John. Be it ordered that a new liquor license for the Kendall Tavern located at 213 Main Street, Freeport be approved?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right. Now it's an official five to zero vote. Sorry about that.
So now we have a vote that we voted yes for, just hanging out there.
Just hanging out there, yeah. We'll have to.
How do we amend that?
We'll beat it into the ground or something.
Anything you wonder?
Yeah. Apologize for that. All right. Our next item is number 56-24 to consider setting a public hearing for a new liquor license for Aki Sushi Tapas Boba located at 10 School Street. Darrell, we'll back down to you for the be it ordered.
Yes. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for March 5th, 2024, at the Freeport Council Chamber, starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport, oh, I'm sorry, Freeport Council's meeting, starting at 6:00 PM at the Freeport Council Chamber, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss a new liquor license for Aki Sushi Tapas Boko located at 10 School Street.
Been moved and seconded. Any other comments? We're just setting the public hearing. Set your hand up, Joanna.
Nope, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we have a public hearing set for March 5th, which amazingly is just next Tuesday.
Can we skip this one and go on because Jessica?
Oh, it's not here?
She's not here, but she may be.
Okay. All right. So we're going to take up item number 57-24 a little bit later in our agenda when the Finance Director is back. That moves us to item number 58-24 to consider action relative to Electrify Everything Program to adjust its initial program guidelines intended by the Freeport Town Council, specifically to limit eligible purchases to heat pumps, hot water, heat pumps, air sealing, insulation, energy assessments, and weatherization. Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the Electrify Everything Program revert to the initial program guidelines intended by the Freeport Town Council, specifically to limit eligible purchases to heat pumps, hot water, heat pumps, air sealing, insulation, energy assessments, and weatherization.
Second.
All right.
So Bob Stevens has reached out to me after our last council meeting, and we met to come up with this change. He's got an amended application he's working on. I don't know if he, I don't know if he wanted to speak. That's the.
Yeah, I was just going to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Set the context that we had this conversation about this exact thing at our last meeting to focus on the remaining disbursements to get back to the core, the core items, eligible items that we had originally created the program with, so that we can finish out and get those things addressed. There didn't seem to be a lot of hubbub about that, and so I think this is just the action to make that happen. You're welcome to say something, Bob, since you designed the program and are implementing it, but you're not under any requirement to.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll keep it short. My name is Bob Stevens. I live at, I live at 50 Moose Crossing. And as we know, we had a hard time getting it going. We got it going by, actually, when the Sustainability Coordinator got hired and helped us, helped produce some very colorful and informative material that we could send out as a postcard, post around town. And the, the program took off. And as you heard at the last meeting, it's very successful, but there's still a lot of people out there who actually need heat pumps. That's what this program was all about for two reasons. We're trying to cut down on fossil fuels. That's why Freeport Can is behind it. And we're trying to do it for people that can't afford to do it themselves. So we're here to support it. We'll get the word out. We'll cover it at a public meeting we'll have on March 23rd and hope that, that rest of that money is used and that you consider future money, if in fact, the demand is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Yes, Joanna?
I know this was one separate issue. Have we discussed or determined an action forward with the challenge with the Freeport Housing Trust, how we're going to pursue that decision?
So the direction that I took from that meeting was that we were not going to hold money and that we were going to reimburse. If an individual had a hardship, we would deal with that as we would any, internally with any other financial hardship. Does that work for council?
I think that's exactly what the conversation was. All right. It's been seconded and moved and had some discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Five to zero.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate your efforts on this, Bob. Our next item is item number 59-24 to consider action relative to a use of town property request. Counsel Brenner, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the town manager is authorized to work with Counselor Fornier to unearth and replace a time capsule located near the Civil War Monument.
Second.
All right. Been moved and seconded. We had some conversation about this last time as well. Darrell, do you want to just fill us in on the context here?
Yeah, I'll add a little bit more to the conversation. So I was approached by a classmate who's with me when we were in the eighth grade and put a time capsule in by the Civil War Monument 52 years ago. So apparently, he approached the town during COVID and was told that nothing could be done. So I told him that I will bring this forward to the council. So in doing so, I thought, number one, it'd be a really good event for the community to get involved with. Number two, I wanted to have the time capsule idea continue. So I reached out to the middle school to see if they would be interested in putting together a time capsule. So the seventh grade said, yeah. And their plan is to put together a time capsule, be present when we unearth the time capsule at the park, and put it in the place of the one we take out. And hopefully, 50 years from now, they'll be doing the same thing. And so I thought that was a really neat event to get the school involved and have the kids. My granddaughter is one of the students who'll be participating, and I said, the cell phone battery won't last that long, so make sure we put something in that will last longer.
Darrell, are they going to be there when we open the old one, too?
They are. That's the plan.
That's great. I think that's, 50 years may not be as impactful for us as it is for.
Exactly. So what we've tentatively scheduled, I did not want to have any earth being disturbed prior to Memorial Day, so we will not do that before Memorial Day. But May 31st, which is a Friday, we're looking from 12:30 to 3:00 to have the school down there to unearth the time capsule then. David Finney, who approached me and my former classmate, has a very detailed map he did in eighth grade of where it is. We need to have some sort of maybe machinery, because I don't plan to dig that. It's down four and a half feet, so it's quite a hole to dig down there. So I will work with Earl and figure a plan to come out. The Historical Society has reached out. Counselor Smith said they'd like to be involved, which I think, again, is very cool to have this happening. So what we're envisioning, hopefully, is some snacks. The kids will come down, we'll unearth it, they'll put theirs in and, and see what we put in the time capsule 52 years ago.
Great. Fantastic. Thanks for organizing that.
You're welcome.
All right. So we have this read and seconded. I think solid support for this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Please. I don't think you have to abstain, Darrell. No, I don't think so. There's no personal benefit for you here, other than, great. All right. Our next item is item number 60-24 to consider action relative to the appointment of Earl Gibson as the Public Works Director. Counsel Pilch, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the appointment of Earl Gibson as the Public Works Director be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Sophie, context on this?
The context is that Earl is currently the Public Works Superintendent, as I just described in the public hearing, to change the code. He has been functioning as a Public Works Director. This simply appoints him. According to the Administrative Code, I can appoint individuals upon, department heads upon confirmation of the council. So we're looking for you to confirm that appointment.
Great. Any questions for the manager? All right. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. Earl does a fabulous job. All right. Now, our next item is item number 61-24 to consider action relative to the adoption of a revised tax-acquired property policy. This might take a few minutes because it's a pretty thick document. Darrell, we'll back down to you. Could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the adoption of a revised tax-acquired property policy be approved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Sophie, can you give us some background?
Sure. So this is actually a longstanding policy for the town of Freeport. While it is never the town's desire, from time to time, people don't pay their property taxes, and when that happens, there is an automatic lien foreclosure that occurs. This policy directs town staff how to manage that foreclosed property once the automatic lien occurs, which is when state law kind of has gone silent in the past. The policy adds, has language that has us get in touch with the previous owner to make sure that they're aware that their property has been foreclosed on, and then to try to work with them. And if they don't work with, if they are not able to repurchase the property, most of the time, it's a matter of they, they're not interested. We would then, in the past, simply put it out for sealed bid. Council would open the bid, and the town would recoup all of the money. There was a Supreme Court case a couple of years ago, I think a year and a half ago now.
That's what I was looking for.
It is, I had it right off the top of my head a while ago, but I've lost it. But in that case, it was a Minnesota case, and it, the court held that the foreclosure with a forfeiture of all of the value is not constitutional. It's an unlawful taking. So Maine had one of the remaining foreclosure laws that was not compliant with the ruling. So the legislature went back last year, passed an emergency legislation that put in place a lengthy process that we now go through. Essentially, everything can stay the same, except we have to give property owners a choice to go through a public sale process that will take a little bit more time. You work with a real estate agent, you sell the property. But at the end, instead of being able to hold all of the proceeds, we can deduct all of our costs, fees that we would normally charge, and the rest of it has to make its way to the property tax owner. So the changes in this ordinance were made to comply with that state law. There are a few typos, but other than that, this is the ordinance, the chief reason we made the change was to, you know, be legal. This ordinance went through ordinance committee, was reviewed, and they are bringing it back with a recommendation to accept it.
Great. Any questions for the manager on that? All right. The item's been moved and seconded. Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Five to zero. All right. Our next item is item number 62-24 to consider action relative to providing funds from the American Rescue Act Funds Fund for transportation projects to support Visit Freeport's June and October Pilot Shuttle Service. Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that the funds from the American Rescue Act, ARPA, funds for transportation projects to support Visit Freeport's June and October Pilot Shuttle Service be approved. Is it?
Sorry, I got. Moved and seconded. It's curious that June and October, not through? So is that specifically just at two ends of the season?
For the Wister Festival and the Fall Festival.
Okay.
And I would just bring folks' attention to the letter because the letter, in the letter, they asked for, they told you that it was a $7,200 cost. And they asked you to, they were asking you to consider a minimum of $3,640, which is 50% of that cost. The reason I wrote the order the way I did was so that council could select the amount of money, but you'll need to amend it so that we have a clear accounting, you know, documentation.
So this is just to approve that we want to do it, and then we're going to decide how much?
So what they really need, Counsel Lawrence, is for council to approve an amount. However, I did not want to.
Got it.
Speak for the council what that amount would be.
Is this coming from the $10,000 that we already approved, not in addition to the $10,000?
Yep.
And do we know if there are other plans for shuttles over the summer? Should we save some money for that or the winter holidays?
I am not aware, but we do have, I think Kelly is online. Yep, her hand just went up.
Great.
And I think I just gave her permission to speak.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for considering our request.
Hi, Kelly.
So my understanding is that there will be further shuttle pilot programs in 2024 just from communicating with the working group that we collaborated with during the holiday of 2023. So that's why we tried not to dip too far into that pot of $10,000. We certainly love any level of support, and if it feels appropriate to do more than the $3,640, we appreciate it, but that's, that's the amount that we thought would, would really help us.
Great. Thank you. Darrell?
I received a call from a constituent that supports us doing pilot programs for transportation. He just didn't agree where we're bringing the money from. So it was interesting. He said he was hoping that the ARPA funds would be used for more permanent type of programs, whether it was signage or whatever, as opposed to just funding a pilot program. That's an interesting concept, and I said I would bring that forward and share that tonight. So I'm not sure if that's an opportunity or not, because I think when we discussed, you know, signage was a big deal back lawn, so I, we almost tend to agree with him that maybe if we could find another avenue to fund this, because I think transportation is important for our downtown area, but also I think there's maybe wiser places to utilize that funds.
I agree. That's my recollection when we actually first started contemplating using ARPA, that it was seen as one-time money and therefore focused on one-time permanent expenses, not recurring expenses. I think you could make an argument, this is a pilot, so maybe it's one-time use to see if the shuttle works. But I think, you know, any, we're making this absent of any sort of analysis of what, you know, a business model might look like for operating a shuttle, which may or may not require recurring.
look like for operating a shuttle, which may or may not require recurring support from the town for it to happen. So, yeah, but I recall that conversation. It's an interesting, I mean, it's a very modest amount of money considering what we've had available. So I'm probably not going to get stuck on it because it's only $3,600. But that's an interesting point.
But is it 36 in addition to 10, right?
No, it comes out of the 10.
It comes out of the 10.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's what Kelly just pointed out, that they're being very soft-footed about reaching into that for this particular item. Joanna?
I just want to recognize that we had a conversation a couple of meetings ago of even obligated funds having to spend, so there might be an opportunity to revisit maybe some dollars that won't spend and how we can redirect those. So I think we have opportunity to get into those conversations again.
True. Darrell?
Well, morning with the manager. I know there used to be different funds around in there, and I don't know if there's an opportunity that that amount, the suggestion could be funded by someplace other than ARPA to, you know, go with, with, I think, a kind of a legit, I know it's not a lot of money, but I think there's a lot of needs coming down the road. And, you know, I, I, I don't know. I would like to maybe research that.
So I've been in the budget quite a bit over the last two weeks. I've been trying to spend some money that we don't have, so I couldn't spend it. And I, I mean, we can go back with Jessica and look some more. We'd be taking it essentially from fund balance because that's where kind of those dead projects go. So it is, so, Council Fornier, when you hired me, you said you wanted a manager who would make recommendations. So I'm going to make a recommendation. I would make a recommendation that in order to allow Visit Freeport to do their planning and understand that the town is going to contribute to this, if we, if you were to pass this now, I would go back and see if we could find alternative funding, and if I can, I'll bring that back and we'll swap it.
I kind of like that decision.
Yeah, I agree with Council Fornier's position about spending ARPA money on significant projects that can move the needle. This one, we've already set aside the $10,000. I feel like we had that debate and have that kind of fund already existing. And we designated it for transportation. I think this is a perfect use of that. So just to keep things simple, I'm comfortable taking money from that $10,000 we've already set aside from ARPA, moving it forward. But spiritually, and conceptually, and philosophically, I agree with, with Dallas' position about, you know, let's look for, for big things that we would not have ordinarily been able to do without ARPA money going forward. So given that, since we need an amount, and we have $10,000 available, and these, I think, other than the Sparkle Festival, are the two biggest draws we have for visitors in Freeport, I would say, why don't we use half of our money for these two shuttles? So I would propose $10, sorry, $5,000 for the shuttles for Visit Freeport. And if there's enough support, I'm happy to make the amendment.
I don't think we actually have to amend anything because we haven't set a dollar amount yet, so that would be
Right. But I would go for what they ask, but who knows what's coming down the pike to say, oh, it'd be great if we had this, and it would come out of the same fund. And it's what they're asking for, so.
Minimum. That for that is a minimum. Yep. I'm fine with that.
All right. So can we have consensus on the minimum request outlined in the letter from Visit Freeport and move that into the motion? All right. So we had it, maybe we can reread that with the dollar amount?
Sure. Be it ordered that 3,600, 3,640
Yep.
from the American Rescue Act, ARPA, funds for transportation projects to Freeport, Visit Freeport's Maine, or June, let me try that again, that $3,640 from the ARPA, or American Rescue Act, ARPA, funds for transportation projects to support Visit Freeport's June and October pilot shuttle service be approved.
I'll second that. That's been moved and seconded. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five to zero. Thanks, Kelly.
All right. We have an item that was tabled at our last meeting. It's item number two, three, dash, two, four, to consider action relative to appointments to an ad hoc committee called the 22 Main Street Advisory Committee to propose, consider and propose ideas back to the council in a few months on opportunities that might be available for an open piece of land on Main Street, specifically 22 Main. The appointments committee met, and we have a list of names, including today. After printing of this agenda, we do have a business name to add to that list. A business owner has confirmed their interest, happily the person we were hoping would join. So I'm going to read this, since I don't think I've shared that business name with anyone, but I just found out right before the meeting. So be it ordered that the following residents be appointed to the 22 Main Street Advisory Committee. From District One, Kathleen Meade. From District Two, Susan Nurse. From District Three, Andrew Arsenault. From District Four, Benjamin Gray. And the business representative would be Andy Wilbur. The two councilors on that committee would be Councilor Matt Pillsbury and Councilor Chip Lawrence.
Second.
All right. Been moved and seconded. We've been wanting to put this together for a while, so finally got it here. I think that's a good balanced committee, and hopefully they'll have some ideas to chew on. The general timeframe, although it's not written, is for roughly a beginning of June delivery back to the council, assuming the property is still available, which we assume it will be, but we have no control over that. So, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five to zero. That's the committee.
Do you want to go back to what we skipped?
Jessica's here.
I'm going to take it.
Okay.
Less than what you would have had before.
All right. So we skipped item number five, seven, dash, two, four, awaiting staff return, but the manager is going to take it. This is to consider action relative to setting a public hearing to discuss the capital program for FY 2025. So we're not having the meaty conversation. This is to simply set the public hearing and get the process kicked off. Where are we? Dan, I think you're next to please read the be it ordered.
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 2nd, 2024, at the Town Council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss the proposed capital program for FY 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anything to add?
So I'm so glad that the meaty program that Jessica already created won't be delivered until the public hearing. But I will tell you, the, all councilors have received that document, and it is on the website. I think there's a copy up back. And we'll be back with a meaty discussion, including answering some council questions regarding funding of the capital reserves.
Are we not discussing that under other business?
No, I goofed.
Okay.
When they said put it on the agenda, I thought it was other business. I didn't, I wasn't thinking public hearing.
Oh, so number three isn't going to be?
Yeah. See, we're making it fast. And I will just say that Jessica had a family issue that she was racing to get back to, and you guys are super speedy.
Okay. Our next order of business is for public comment for those joining us virtually.
Do you want to set the public hearing?
Do we? Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't vote. Look at that. I'm getting rusty here. All those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Five to zero. Great. Thank you. That was for item five, seven, dash, two, four. Our next order of business is the public comment for those joining us virtually. Do we see any hands up on Zoom? I don't see any, but I'm not
Nope.
looking at that. Okay. That concludes our action items for this evening's agenda. We have a couple of things on other business. Two items, public safety, building, planning discussion, and a very minor item concerning building height restrictions in the downtown village that's actually sort of already in motion. Maybe we'll just do that one first since it's virtually just an announcement. To explore further opportunities for enhancing housing opportunities in the core in downtown, we wanted to ask the planning board if they would consider taking a look at some of the regulations in the downtown village area, including height restrictions and number of stories. And right now, in VC1, there is language in there that all buildings have to be three stories.
Or less.
Or less. And there's plenty of opportunity to explore maybe different ways that we can regulate building height. So, and we've talked about that numerous times in terms of the central core working group recommendations. I was absent from the meeting where those recommendations were adopted, or else I would have been saying that three weeks ago, or whenever that was. So what has in motion is that the planning board is going to take that up. They can't take it up unless we ask or a resident asks. So we're asking them to consider that. There'll be public hearings at the planning board. There'll be an examination. They'll do their usual process, and then that, assuming something comes forward, we'll get it back here. So that's, I talked to Sam Capala, the chair of the planning board today, and he was very amenable to that. So, anyway, so that's number two, public safety, building, planning. Sophie?
So during the 22 Main Street discussions, people talked a little bit about the public safety building, and then, and that was just prior to my arrival. And then I got here, and I toured the public safety building. And then I had a conversation with Councilor Fornier, because I understand I've only had one perspective, and asked if it made some sense for us to at least begin some of the feasibility and space planning for the public safety building so that we could pull together conceptual ideas of options that council could then look at and decide what next steps to take. Darrell, you said you were going to help me with this.
I will. So what I would like to propose this evening is there is certainly a need to look at the space at the public safety building for, the police advisory has come forward and said there's a definite need, number one, and there's certainly a need on the other side for fire rescue. So I'd like to make a bold recommendation here that we form a five-person committee, three people being the Municipal Facilities Committee, with three councilors, the town manager, and one person from the police advisory committee to start the process, to go out to assess the buildings and come forward and, probably it's going to take a year or so, to come up with some ideas of how to address what we need to do. I don't think this is going to be a very fast thing, and I'm kind of envisioning maybe two years from this November, when possibly we'd have a plan and vote. So I don't want to rush this through, but I want to start the process. And I think to start the process, when I talk to the manager, I think, you know, some funding would be needed. And if I remember, we were thinking right around $100,000. You've had some experience in the past of doing a very similar project in RNO, and that come out very good. So I'm hoping that we could get the ball rolling, attach some funding, make a small committee so the committee can be very diligent and efficient in getting this started, and then have a plan where we, as a full council, will discuss what we go for and probably eventually have a vote by the public.
Dan?
Just weighing in from the police advisory committee, we spent a few meetings looking at this, and, or at least from the police part of the building. We didn't look at the fire department part of the building. And one suggestion I have is for folks that aren't familiar with the building, take a 10, 15-minute tour. It was very, very enlightening. I went from thinking, you know, well, they're kind of whining about a new building, to wow, they have really been carrying a lot of water and living with the stuff that they've had to live with, and it's compromising a lot of our activities there. So we came out strongly in support of figuring out what we need to do to look at options. My only question, so I'm supportive of this, my only question is, we did set aside, I think it was $45,000 in last year's budget to start the process?
And in this coming year's budget, I have added another 65 or 70 to cover the rest. So
So it's not instead of, it's in addition to?
In addition to.
We think even the planning stage is going to take
Yeah. Yep. So what I think is really important is that we look at the analysis in two ways. One is the structure of the building so that we really get in and understand the life, where your systems are, what the structure is. One of the questions I have is, can we go up? Can we take what we have and just go up? And the other piece would be the architectural space survey. The, when I've done this in the past, when they take those two things to then come back with a couple of options. So it's not just one architect idea of what you're going to do, so that the town council and staff can kind of work together and understand the pros and cons of each, and then have council begin to move us towards one of those options to bring back. At that point, at the end of the feasibility study, we will have like scope of magnitude budget numbers. And as we work through the whole planning process, and you finalize kind of what you're looking for, we'll be able to refine that number to one that we'll be able to take out to, to the voters.
And so it would go out to bid because of the amount of the
I would do an RF, the reason that Darrell and I are here tonight is because I'd really like to put an RFQ out and have this group at minimum, even if we just started with the facilities committee, review the RFP, and then once we get responses, kind of bring a group in to make sure that we're working with the right team, and that we are comfortable with where we're going to go. And I would just clarify that with the manager sitting on this team, my expectation is that at every meeting, we would also have the chiefs there, that it's not exempting them. It's just
Exactly. Yeah, no, there certainly is going to be a lot of time, and not only chiefs, but I'm hoping other crucial people of those departments.
I'm supportive of this. I would like to actually take a smaller first step and, and maybe have the feasibility and assessment of our current building be focused from an engineer's perspective as opposed to an architect. And the only reason I say that is because there's just a natural momentum that a design professional is going to come in and say, here's the design, and then there's a picture, and then people are looking at the picture, and all of a sudden, the train is long down the track of, we're going to have this big building, and we haven't even taken an assessment of the structure that we have in place. The building is not terribly old. I completely agree that it's antiquated for its use, and it is not a favorable work environment by any means. But I don't think that means that it's ready to be thrown away.
So I've done this both ways before, one with an architect leading the way, and one with an engineer leading the way. And I would 100% agree with you that having your engineer as the lead and the control arm of the project is really important. We ended up firing the architect and hiring the engineer after. So I think you're, you're absolutely right. And I think when we write the RFQ, we can make that very clear. That's a good point.
I think it's too soon because we don't know much about the building to talk about what a design might look like. The improvements that are made could very well be an addition or, I'm making this up, an enhancement of structure so that we could go up and that the shell of the building actually actually doesn't change much at all. We don't know that. So I think we should get that information before we make any commitments to actually have a design in there.
In the RFQ process that I've worked on before, you lay out what you think the entire scope is going to be.
Yep.
And then, when you go in, you pick the people that you want, and as you negotiate, oftentimes that's a phased contract, so you can actually depart
Right.
...if you're not happy. But you're, you're right.
So were you looking for, Daryl, were you looking for this committee to sort of self-select?
I'm not sure if we need an official vote, but maybe we do to start the process.
The facilities, the manager, and then you said...
I would like to, yeah.
The Police Advisory.
I'd like to have the Municipal Facilities Committee, which is three, Town Manager, which is four, one person from the Police Advisory Committee, which is five. That would be my recommendation.
The two chiefs participate as...
To participate, and I like your idea on the engineer job, it makes a total amount of sense, definitely. So I would like to make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Great. All right, consensus? Matt, you just say yes at this point.
Yeah, I've been watching along at home.
Welcome. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, great idea. Thanks for bringing that forward.
Put in a plug for a vacant seat on the Police Advisory Committee. We're, we're short-staffed by one, so if anybody has any interest in following along with the Police Department and helping to advise, that we have an open seat.
All right, fantastic. That is sort of part of the perpetual request for engagement in our number of boards and committees that we have openings. If you're interested in learning more and finding out more about how town government works, please contact Chris Wolfe, not before next Tuesday,
Right.
...but maybe after next Tuesday, after the election, two days after the election. Please come in and talk to Chris Wolfe, and you can find out about committees. All right, our next item is executive session, so we're going to adjourn our regular meeting and go into executive session. I think we need a motion with the door open.
I'll make a motion.
Council Lawrence, could you please read the motion for 63-24?
Motion that the Town Council enter executive session.
Seconded.
You have to mention the citation.
Yeah.
You mentioned all the MRSA stuff.
Okay. So to consider action relative to an executive session pursuant to one MRSA 4056C pertaining to use and lease of 55 Main Street. Motion that the Town Council enter executive session.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, we are in executive session.